Check, check. Okay, looks like we're waiting for a couple of green sheets, but I think we can continue, proceed with opening the meeting. Welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, July 24, 2025. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. I call the meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. and can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Can we get verification of legal notice? Thank you, and we do have one item in the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the minutes of July 10, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? And consent agenda passes. Before we begin our 9:05 timed item, we do have public input where anyone in the public can speak on any topic that is not on today's agenda. So if you would like to speak on anything that is not on today's agenda, please come to the podium. Remember to state your first and last name for the record, and you'll be given three minutes. If you could just take a look in the Zoom room to see if anyone is there. All right, seeing none, we have about two minutes before our 9:05 timed item. So there's going to be a little bit of an awkward wait. In the meantime.
Sam. Okay, good. Just wanted to make a note that we did receive a couple of emails expressing difficulty accessing or sending in public comment through the eComment option and through Granicus, our online agenda software. We did receive those emails or that public input via direct email, and so those are before you today.
Thank you. Seeing that we do have a time of 9:05, we can begin with our item 6A. Public hearing consideration of PL 25-112, EIR 24-01, DA 24-01, AM 24-01, GPAP 24-01, GPAP 24-02, RZ 24-01, GPD 24-01, UP 24-05, RZ 24-02, and UP 24-08 for the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. The applicant is Lotus Land Investment Holdings Incorporated. And we do have staff here who's going to give us a presentation, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We share. Click on. You can click on it first. And then the green up top. Yep. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name's Laura Hall. I'm with the CDD Department, and I'm here to present the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project for your consideration. The project applicant is Lotus Land Investment Holdings Incorporated, and the primary project address for the Guanac Ranch Site is 22,000 Butts Canyon Road in Middletown. The Middletown Workforce Housing Site's address is 21,000 Santa Clara Road in Middletown. The Guanac Ranch Site's primary assessor's parcel number is 014-310-09, and the Middletown Workforce Site's assessor's parcel number is 014-380-09. Today's agenda includes the overview of the project requests, or the permit requests, the project description, the site description, the project analysis, the points of interest, environmental review, comments received, and recommendations. This is the regional map of the project site, which shows the Guanac Valley Site outlined in red, and the Middletown Housing Site, which is located near State Highway 175. The off-site well is at the corner of State Highway 29 and Butts Canyon Road, and the black-and-white grid shown in the middle of the map is not part of the project site. The applicant is requesting approval of the following permit applications under PL 25-112, EIR 24-01, which includes the July 2024 Draft Partially Revised Environmental Impact Report, or PREIR for short, the March 2025 Draft PREIR, the July 2025 Final Partially Revised ER, EIR, and all appendices and supporting information, as well as the 2020 Draft EIR, Final EIR, and Final EIR errata. The applicant is also requesting DA 24-01, which includes the development agreement. For the Guanac Ranch Site, the applicant is requesting approval of the following: GPD 24-01, which includes the General Plan of Development; RZ 24-01, which includes the rezone; UP 24-05, which includes the use permit; AM 24-01, which includes the zoning ordinance text amendment; GPAP 24-01 and 24-02, which includes the general plan amendment. For the Middletown Site, the applicant is requesting approval of RZ 24-01, which is a rezone; UP 24-08, which is a use permit, and the permits will be discussed later on in this presentation. The proposed project includes the Guanac Valley Site, which covers approximately 16,000 acres and is located in the southeast portion of unincorporated Lake County, approximately 3.5 miles east of the unincorporated community of Middletown. The present use of the property includes vineyards, grazing, horse trails, and a hunting lodge and a few residences. The Guanac Valley Site does not include the area of approximately 360 acres, which contains the Langtree Winery and the Lily Langtree Estate home. The Middletown Housing Site, also known as the Santa Clara Housing Site, is located at 21,000 Santa Clara Road in Middletown. A 50-lot subdivision was approved in 2006 for this property but has expired. Although not up for approval today, but included in Phase 1 development, the proposed Santa Clara subdivision follows a similar lot layout. Now for the Guanac Valley Site, the project is requesting the following: a general plan and Middletown Area Plan Amendment. The applicant is requesting to amend the general plan land use designations for the Guanac Valley Site to resort commercial consistent with intent of the Middletown Area Plan. This designation would allow for the proposed mixed-use development. The applicant is also requesting to amend the Langtree-Guannac Special Study Area Map of the Middletown Area Plan to include the area commonly known as the college parcels, which can be seen in Attachment 8 of the staff report. Two, the applicant is also requesting a zoning ordinance amendment and rezone request. The existing zoning on the Guanac Valley Site consists of RL rural lands, A agriculture, RR rural residential, and APZ agricultural preserve zone, which is included in Figure 3.23 of Attachment 7D. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment would create a new zoning district, the proposed Guanac Valley District zoning district, and the proposed rezone would apply this new zoning district to the entire Guanac Site to allow a mixed-use plan development, including a primarily focus on agriculture, resort, and accessory commercial and residential uses. Within the proposed Guanac Valley District Within the proposed Guanac Valley District Zoning District, there are two new combining districts proposed to preserve the rural character of the area, designated open space that includes two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-five acres and agriculture, which includes one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-three acres, both of which would preclude resort and residential development. These combining districts are in addition to the existing combining districts, which will remain and include floodway fringe, scenic waterway, and wetlands. The existing combining districts under current county zoning are not proposed to change and therefore do not constitute a project component. The floodway fringe with one-hundred-and-thirteen acres, the scenic with five-hundred-and-eighty-four acres, and the water with nine-hundred-and-eighty-one acres, and the wetlands with one-hundred-and-seven acres are combining existing zoning overlays on the property and would remain under the property project. These combining districts overlap with the existing and overlap with each other and overlap with the proposed zoning and proposed new combining districts. Table one of the March twenty-twenty-five draft PREIR contains a summary of the proposed Guanac Valley District Zoning District Primary Uses. These uses would be allowed with the approval of a specific plan of development. The applicant is requesting approval of a specific plan of development for only the first phase of development, which is planned to cover the first ten years of development, and this phase is what was analyzed in the final EIR at the project level. Development of any future phases would require approval of a specific plan of development for that development. Table one in the staff report includes a breakdown of development intentions between the Guanac Valley Zoning District and Phase One and future phases. It should be noted that the EIR evaluated the construction of a new pipeline within the right away of Butts Canyon Road from an off-site well property located on the northeast corner of Butts Canyon Road and State Route twenty-nine. However, the applicant is not requesting any specific entitlements to install it this time. Number three, the applicant is also requesting a general plan and specific plan of development and a major use permit. The general plan of development outlines the development, which is included in Attachment nine of the staff report. The specific plan of development refines the project and will ultimately be the governing use permit to allow development of Phase One of the land use as proposed, which is included in Attachment ten of the staff report. Another requested approval is a major use permit. In general, the mixed development includes four development clusters, each designed to be different architect. The clusters are shown on Figure five of the staff report, which includes the Maha Farm, Equestrian, Denton Gulf Estates, formerly named the Red Hill Estates, and the Bond Ridge. Each cluster includes hotel rooms within the primary structure, including surrounded by resort residential units and then low-impact residential villas parcels. The central village called Maha Farm surrounds the Upper Bond Lake, an existing agricultural reservoir to showcase farm-to-table concepts, including a weekly farmer's market, artesian barns to include local sources, agricultural products, a restaurant, a cafe, and market gardens. A private residence club includes a sports and recreational facility located near Maha Farm. The Equestrian Center includes two regulation polo fields, a pony camp, a clubhouse, and a lodge. The Bond Ridge Cluster includes resort facilities such as a pool, restaurant, and hotel units. Supporting infrastructure includes the back-of-house facilities, which include all shipping and receiving administrative support, ground-mounted solar areas over parking structures or within the landscape, roadways and trails, electrical distribution centers, water treatment facilities, wastewater treatment facilities. And number four, now for the Middletown Workforce Housing Site. The applicant is requesting a rezone for the Middletown Workforce Housing Site to change the zoning designation on three-point-five acres of the twelve-acre parcel from R-one single-family residential to R-two two-family residential to allow for a multifamily duplex density within the inner portion of the larger parcel. The remainder of the property will remain R-one single-family residential. Although not included in approvals before the planning commission today, the applicant will be requesting approval of a tentative map for this property to allow for the onsite workforce housing development, which would subdivide the property into thirty-eight parcels to include twenty-one single-family residential lots, fifteen development lots, one community clubhouse lot, and a small park area vacant lot. The applicant is also requesting a use permit as required for the community center in duplexes. And this is the proposed Phase One site plan with project modifications, which are discussed later on in this presentation. The map includes parcels and areas, the main resorts and features at the Guanac Ranch Site. And this is the Phase One communities, which were mentioned before. The Bond Ridge Resort Community will include forty-nine hotel units, thirty resort units, and one-hundred-and-twelve residential estates. The Equestrian Center Community will include fifty hotel units and sixty-seven residential estates. The Maha Farm Community will include forty-eight hotel units, one-hundred-and-four resort residential units, and seventy-three residential estates. And the Dentonten Gulf Estates Community will include seven resort units and one-hundred-and-thirty-three residential estates. These two maps show the existing general plan designations and the proposed resort-commercial CR designations at the Guanac Ranch Site. These two maps show the existing and proposed zoning designations for both the Guanac Ranch Site and the Middletown Workforce Site. On the Guanac Ranch Site, all the existing zoning will be changed to the Guanac Valley District GVD for short, and the combining districts would be kept under the new proposed GVD designation. And as mentioned before, the single-family R-one designation at the Middletown Round, Middletown Workforce Housing Site would be changed to two-family residential R-two on the three-point-five acres of the twelve-acre site. Now, we're going to go over the site description. The Guanac Valley Site parcels are currently developed with over a thousand acres of vineyards and approximately seventy-two miles of existing roadways, overland water pipelines and associated pumps and accessories to move the water from five irrigation reservoirs. The site is bordered by rural and agricultural lands that have a mix of dry grazing lands, vineyards, and irrigated pastures. The Cedars Mountains border the northeast side of the Guanac Valley Site and a previous U.S. Coast Guard Lauren Station Military Reservation to the northwest. The closest edge of the Hidden Valley Lake Community is approximately one mile northwest of the Guanac Valley Site boundary, and the Middletown Community is approximately six miles to the west. The property area is located within a rural area of the county with slopes that range from approximately twenty percent to greater than thirty. Soils are discussed in the preliminary geotechnical analysis in Attachment seventeen of the staff report. The South Lake County Fire Protection District and CAL FIRE would provide fire protection and fire suppression services, and the Lake County Sheriff's Office and California Department of Highway Patrol for law enforcement to the site. Groundwater would serve the potable water supply, and treated wastewater combined with existing surface water rights will serve the non-potable water demand. Additional information can be found in the Water Supply Assessment and Water Feasibility Study in Attachment seven B to this staff report, as well as more recent drilling test results, which are included in Appendix G-one of Attachment one B of the staff report. On-site wastewater treatment facilities are proposed to serve the project, and the wastewater feasibility study in the twenty-twenty EIR is included in Attachment seven B of the staff report. The Middletown House Site is currently undeveloped and is surrounded by medium-density residential and commercial uses to the east and south. Dry Creek and an undeveloped area bordering the south to the north and bordering the site to the north and west. Elevation ranges from approximately one-thousand-ninety-five feet above mean sea level on the western portion of the site and eleven-hundred feet mean sea level on the eastern portion. As identified on the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Map Firm effective January ninth, twenty-twenty-five, the Middletown Housing Site is located in the Zone AO, which has a one percent chance of flood hazard with two feet, with the two-feet base flood elevation. The one percent area chance of flood hazard is the one-hundred flood zone. Dry Creek borders the western edge of the site, and thus, a small portion of the Middletown Housing Site is classified as AE, a regulatory floodway. The site is currently undeveloped and is surrounded by medium-density residential and commercial uses to the east and south, Dry Creek and an undeveloped area bordering the site to the north and west. The county water district is proposed to supply potable water to the Middletown Housing Site pending annexation. An annexation request to the local agen- agency formation commission and a well-served letter has been provided. The South Lake County Fire Protection District and CAL FIRE will provide fire and fire services to the services and the Lake County Sheriff's Office and the California Highway Patrol will provide law enforcement services to the site. Now for the project analysis. Staff analyzed the project to see if it was in compliance with the county twenty-twenty-eight area general plan and the Middletown Area Plan and the zoning ordinance. Appendix GPCT of the twenty-twenty EIR includes the general plan consistency determination for the project, which is included in Attachment seven B of the staff report. Because policy LU six-point-twelve was not included in the previous twenty-twenty staff reported consistency determination was completed, and the project was found to be consistent with that policy. As a reminder, staff would like to point out that among the several policies that were analyzed in the twenty-twenty EIR, policy HE-one-nine, the county shall place a priority on development on new residential housing. Staff's analysis found that on- and off-site workforce housing would be leased to employees and local residents and would therefore increase the amount of new rental housing in the county. The Middletown Area Plan was also included in the consistency determination in Appendix GPCT of the twenty-twenty EIR, which is also mentioned bef- which was also mentioned before and is included in Attachment seven B to the staff report. Staff also evaluated the following zoning ordinance articles and found that the project is in compliance with each, and again, the analysis is covered in the staff report. Now, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Annalise from Acorn to discuss the listed points of interest.
Can you just remind us who Acorn is?
Yes, so I'm Annalise Sanborn with Acorn Environmental, and we are the environmental consulting firm that has been facilitating the county's preparation of these documents.
Okay, thank you. And who hired you?
We are contracted directly with Lotus Land, the applicant, but take our direction from the county staff.
Thank you.
All right. So the county certified the twenty-twenty EIR back in July of twenty-twenty, but multiple petitions were filed against that decision in Superior Court, and these came from the Center for Biological Diversity, or CBD, from the California Native Plant Society, CNPS, and the Attorney General Office. In twenty-twenty-two, in twenty-twenty-two, the Superior Court found. Yeah, we still need PowerPoint. But while she's pulling that one back up, the, in twenty-twenty-two, the Superior Court found that the EIR analysis complied with CEQA in all areas with the exception of community evacuation. And for that one issue area, the Superior Court determined that the evacuation analysis needed to better assess how the project would impact the surrounding community and to provide additional substantial evidence for that determination. That slide was mostly text, but I'm going to have some good graphics, so I don't want to get too far ahead. And then I just need to advance one. Shall I use this here? Perfect. Thank you. It's okay. All right, so in my thrilling presentation here, where are we? Okay, so in twenty-twenty-two, we left off with the Superior Court ruling about the community evacuation analysis. And in this flow chart here, that is the yellow bubble in the center. And from here, you can see that the process diverges into several directions. CBD appealed that court decision up to the First Appellate District Court, which goes towards the right. In the meantime, at around the same time, the applicant was working with the Attorney General on a settlement agreement that included some project modifications. So, to react to the Superior Court decision and address the project modifications, the county published a draft partially revised EIR, or PREIR, in July of twenty-twenty-four. Before the county could respond to comments and issue a final PREIR, the First Appellate District Court published their decision on CBD's appeal. That occurred in October of twenty-twenty-four. The First Appellate District Court agreed with the Superior Court in all instances except one. In addition to community evacuation, it also required additional analysis of wildfire risk. So now, all environmental topics from the twenty-twenty EIR, with the exception of wildfire as a whole, have been upheld. The county updated the draft PREIR to include wildfire risk and recirculated it in March of this year. The final PREIR addressing public comments received on both draft PREIRs was published earlier this month. The PREIR provided a complete and update and recirculation of the wildfire chapter as required by the courts. In addition, it assessed the various project modifications that have occurred since twenty-twenty, looking at whether or not new or more severe significant impacts could occur from those modifications compared to what was analyzed and upheld in the twenty-twenty EIR. So these project modifications resulted from a few different things. Some came from the settlement agreement. Some came with the need to comply with new laws that have. Some came with the need to comply with new laws that have been adopted since 2020, as well as the design of a new emergency access road called the Grange Road Connector. These generally included the parcel reconfiguration, where remote parcels at the edges of the wildland urban interface were removed and then relocated into the central portion of the property. That increased the density slightly. Another project modification was connector roadways, ensuring that no dead-end roads existed that would contradict the state's newly adopted fire safe regulations, as well as a host of greenhouse gas reduction measures, like increasing solar energy commitments, removing natural gas usage, purchasing more carbon offset credits, that type of thing. The wildfire prevention plan was also updated as a result of emerging best practices and a drought management plan was prepared to comply with Lake County's ordinance adopted since 2020. In this graphic, it depicts the changes in the project footprint, or the area of potential effect, APE, that have occurred as a result of the project modifications. So the orange in the background is the 2020 version of the APE, where the blue crosshatch on top of that is the modified APE with the project modifications. As you can see, many of the more remote development areas in the north were removed and we've also called out on the left or west side where the Grange Road Connector, the emergency access road, was added. This graphic depicts an overview of the wildfire prevention plan, or WPP, which is a very detailed document that governs how the project would address everything from installing and maintaining fuel breaks, planning for the safest drought tolerant and low wildfire risk landscaping, to active management of the 16,000 acre property via grazing and manual vegetation removal. One of the project modifications also included adding a 10-foot hardscape shoulder on the side of all, on each side of all area roadways, which would further enhance their ability to function as fire breaks. The appellate court decision required more analysis of wildfire risks, as well as the opinion that some of the measures in this WPP could be categorized as design features, part of the project description, but that anything that requires long-term maintenance is better characterized under CEQA as a mitigation measure. So the more recent March 2025 draft PREIR had a complete reanalysis of the wildfire risk topic. Wildfire risk is a complicated subject that includes factors such as the likelihood of a fire to start, which is analyzed via ignition, the intensity of the fire, which can be analyzed using computer models that simulate flame length and heat, as well as factors around community susceptibility, which includes things such as the arrival time of the fire, building design and layout, and proximity to emergency services. The graphics show two of the components that were assessed in the draft PREIR, so it's a very high-level snapshot of the analysis. On the left is flame length. The top graphic on the left shows a lot of dark orange and red. That is what the model shows as the current flame length, or the baseline conditions for the Gwinoc Valley site. Below that, showing lighter yellow and oranges, indicates a sharp decline in the flame length once the project's WPP is implemented, predominantly due to the landscape level vegetation management that is proposed. Lower flame length is important because taller flames are more dangerous and more difficult for first responders to fight. The right graphic shows the amount of time it would take for a wildfire to pass across the site. In this graphic, dark colors are actually a positive thing, as the darker blues indicate additional time that the fire would take to pass across the landscape. This is due primarily to lower fuels. On the top, a wildfire coming from the east and heading towards the Hidden Valley subdivision in Middletown would be slowed down by between two and six hours, giving folks more time to evacuate. The bottom graphic shows similar changes in fire arrival time for a fire coming from the west and heading east. As is typical for a project of this size and complexity, the EIR did find that there would be some impacts that would be significant and unavoidable, which means there is either no mitigation available or that the mitigation available cannot fully reduce the impact to less than significant levels. These areas included aesthetics, agriculture, greenhouse gases, noise, and transportation. All other topical areas like hydrology and water quality, population and housing, biology, et cetera, all had impacts that could be reduced to less than significant levels with the mitigation measures that were upheld by the courts. And here, I will turn it back to Laura.
Did you go to the next slide? Can't see with my glasses on. There we go. And the county received agencies submitted comments on the 2025 draft PREIR and the county's request for review of the project application, which are included in Attachments 1A and 5 of the staff report. Comments have been incorporated into the conditions of approval, which are included in Attachment 2 of the staff report. Other comments received in the 2020 EIR are included in Attachment 7C of the staff report. Several public comments were received on the 2024 and 2025 draft partially revised EIRs and the county's request for review of the project application, which are included in Attachments 1 and 5. Notification under Assembly Bill 52 and Senate Bill 18 were sent to tribal governments on March 28, 2024, and the Northwest Information Center was contacted to the county's request for review process, which was sent on March 28, 2024. An email was received on March 29, 2024, from the Middletown Rancheria requesting consultation. The county sent an email to the tribe's tipple on April 1, 2024. After not hearing from the tipple, the county sent a follow-up email on June 13, 2024, providing new dates for consultation, but again, did not hear back from the tipple. Another follow-up was sent on August 19, 2024, and the county heard from the Middletown Rancheria stating that they wanted a consultation. The consultation occurred on August 27, 2024, and was closed that same day. The closure letter was sent to the Middletown Rancheria on August 27, 2024. Tribal consultation communications are included in Attachment 6 to the staff report. And now for the recommendation. Recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the following motions. One, move that the planning commission adopt the use permit PL 25112, use permit, or UP 2405, for the Gwinoc Valley site conditioned upon approval of the general plan amendments GPAP 2401 and 2402, and zoning ordinance amendment AM 2401 by the Board of Supervisors. The permit adopted today for the general plan and specific plan of development shall be of no force or effect until the Board of Supervisors approves the general plan and zoning amendments as recommended by this commission. Two, move that the planning commission adopt the use permit PL 25112 UP 2408, for the Middletown Housing Site conditioned upon approval of the zoning amendment RZ 2402 by the planning, by the Board of Supervisors. The permit adopted today shall have no force or effect until the Board of Supervisors approves the zoning amendment as recommended by the commission. Three, move that the planning commission adopt the CEQA findings pursuant to and included in the staff report dated July 24, 2025, including adoption of a statement of overriding considerations and a mitigation monitoring reporting program and thereby certify the final EIR. Four, move that the planning commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopts the ordinance rezoning the Gwinoc Valley site parcels to a Gwinoc Valley-specific district, adding a new chapter to the zoning code pertaining to development in that district and specify and design guidelines for the future development in that district. Five, move that the planning commission recommend the Board of Supervisors approve a general plan amendment, rezone general plan of development, specific plan of development, and development agreement with the following findings. A, as outlined in staff report, this general plan amendment and rezone is consistent with the Lake County general plan, the Middletown Area Plan, and the Lake County zoning ordinance. B, the uses proposed by the general plan of development are compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity. C, that the site for the project is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the type of use and level of development proposed. D, that there are adequate public and private services, including but not limited to fire protection, water supply, sewage disposal, and police protection to serve the project. Six, move that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors approve a rezone of the interior portion of the Santa Clara site for a single-family residential R1 to two-family residential R2, subject to the attached findings. And seven, move that the planning commission approve the use permit to allow for the community clubhouse at the Santa Clara site. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project with the sample motions listed in the July 24, 2025 staff report. And that's the end of the presentation. If you have any questions, staff and applicant's team are available. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Are there any questions from the commission to staff at the moment?
I wonder if you could give us a little more information on the five areas that can't be mitigated. You had a list up there, starting with aesthetics, greenhouse, noise, and transportation.
Okay, yes, so under CEQA, additional findings need to be made called a statement of overriding considerations for anything that cannot be mitigated to less than significant levels, which are these five. And it's not to say that the entire topic of noise, but there is an impact within each of these topical areas. So for instance, greenhouse gas emissions is a topic that the 2020 EIR included mitigation requiring the one-time purchase of carbon offset credits in order to reduce the emissions to below the significance threshold, but the county was unable to guarantee that that could be fully implemented, that there would be enough credits available and available at the time meeting the criteria. So although technically, the purchase of those credits would get the project below the significance threshold, it's more conservative to remain, or have the impact remain as significant and unavoidable. Similarly, for one of the traffic impacts in the transportation section, there is some evidence that there would be increases at intersections in Napa County, where there, the implementation of mitigation to fix or mandate changes to those intersections to alleviate the traffic impact is outside of the control of the county, and therefore that is one of the significant and unavoidable impacts.
In Napa County, did you say?
Yes, there are two up near Calistoga, and these were all, there are mitigation measures that are available, but they are not outside, or they are not completely within the control of the county. So under CEQA, they were found to be significant and unavoidable.
Could you speak to the aesthetics and the agriculture and forestry services?
Yes, so there is quite a bit of prime, unique, or locally important farmland on the Gwinoc Valley site. I actually have a map of that. There we go. And so the proposed project would result in the removal of some of those areas that are currently planted to vineyard and the establishment of either roads, residences, or resort uses in those areas. Even with the agritourism and agricultural amenities, there will be some removal of what has been mapped as prime farmland or farmland of importance. The numbers, the acres of agricultural impacts actually stayed fairly consistent in terms of proportion between the 2020 EIR and now. That being said, there was an increase in the amount of farmland that was mapped just due to the changes in satellite imagery technology that they use for this mapping. So this map here on the left shows basically the underlying condition is the same vineyard planted in 2016, which was the mapping used for the 2020 EIR. A lot of the vineyard on the site was not actually mapped as important farmland, and now it has been re-designated, even though the vineyard didn't change, the mapping from the state did. So the removal of that, even though mitigation is in place, they will need to put in a conservation easement for every acre of farmland that is impacted. They will need to permanently preserve via conservation easement, whether on or off-site, additional land for agricultural purposes. But even with that mitigation, the impact is still significant and unavoidable.
Can you quantify it? How many acres are we talking about?
You give me one moment to scroll. I can certainly do that for you.
While you're doing that, I have a question. This is probably for staff. Do we have to rezone the entire 16,000 acres to resort? Can we not preserve some of it as, as ag?
So we're changing the land use designation to resort conservation, and the reason why we're doing that is to make it compatible with a resort use. But additionally, we're also, as far as the rezone goes, we're creating a new zoning district that will regulate the development and design standards for the resort. Within that project, there are still now new zoning overlays that will retain and save agriculture. So, so we are also preserving land for agriculture and open space. We're just doing it in a different way than we normally do it.
So I'm hearing you say, yes, the entire thing does have to be rezoned.
The general plan land use designation changes, as well as the zoning, yes. The, the, the project with all its many details is realized through both the land use designation amendment and the establishment of a new zoning district and the assignment of that zoning district to the project site. Yes, that's a yes, but a lot more words.
And I can revisit the acreage question that you had. This is for the area of potential effect, which I would stress is not the same thing as the development footprint, because the residential parcels, the homes have not been designed on those parcels. And so the area of potential effect includes the entirety of that parcel, knowing that the home within it will be much smaller, but you know, the maximum amount that could potentially be impacted is up to 325 acres of farmland across the 16,000 acre site.
Thank you.
I think the last point was the aesthetics. Did you mention that one?
Yes, I may not have. Thank you for reminding me. There is a existing zoning overlay on the project site along Butts Canyon Road. It's a scenic corridor, and the proposed underlying zoning change to Gwinoc Valley District and the two new overlays that are proposed for the project would not impact the existing zoning overlays, so that scenic corridor would remain, and the project does And the project does include the construction of a new primary access road to Butts Canyon, so there will just by design and necessity need to be new development in that scenic corridor for the entrance point.
Going back to the farmland, can you further explain the mitigation for that 325 acres?
So for every acre of important farmland, which is farmland that has been designated by the Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program, that is converted to non-agricultural uses, there will be a conservation easement, deed restriction, or other form of long-term permanent protection of farmland of equivalent quality that would be converted. So the mitigation measure stipulates that it must be within 100 miles of the Guanac Valley site, and it also must have the necessary means for it to be sustained in agricultural uses, infrastructure, access, water, et cetera.
Thank you.
Have those locations been identified?
To my knowledge, no.
Are there any more questions before we open up public comment?
I have many, many questions, but I'd like to hear what the public has to offer first.
Okay, I'm getting a consensus. We will be opening up. Would it be appropriate to take the five-minute break now before we open public comment? We're at that one hour mark.
That'd be great, yeah. Thank you.
So before we open up to public comment, we're going to take a five-minute break. Gives everyone a chance to stretch their legs for a little bit and get your questions in order, so thank you. We'll come back at 10:05. All right, so I'll open the meeting as soon as she gets back. There she is.
There she is.
All right. So I'd like to bring the meeting back to order at 10:06. We left off with one item before we opened up public comment, and I'll give the attention over to Director Turner.
I will defer to Anna Lee, who had one last impact to cover.
Okay, thank you, and apologies, but it appears that I missed the discussion of the significant and unavoidable noise impact and wanted to revisit that. So there was a very robust analysis in the 2020 EIR for different types of noise. Construction noise was found to be less than significant with mitigation. Operational noise was analyzed. The significant and unavoidable impact is actually due to the increase in noise due to traffic that would be brought about by the project. And so a noise analysis was done of various road segments that would be, or that was modeled, that would have area, excuse me, area roadways that would have project traffic. And of those, there was one segment of Butts Canyon Road where the projected increase in cars on Butts Canyon Road would increase 4.4 decibels, which makes it go just over the county's acceptable threshold, and there is no mitigation available for that one segment of road.
Just another question. On your presentation, all those maps that you had shown us, that was the first time that we had seen those, and for me, I could sort of see them. They mostly looked like a Monet painting. I couldn't quite tell exactly what you were delineating. Is there any way that we can get copies of those? They were presented important information, that first time we've seen this.
Yes, we're happy to send you standalone PDFs of those maps that are in their original resolution, and they can also be seen in the partially revised EIR files as well.
Director Turner, did we have anything from you?
Thank you. I do have one additional proposed condition of approval to add. There has been concern regarding use of water surrounding this project, and so the developers have worked on the following proposed condition in order to allay that concern. It would read as follows. There shall not be any wells created or operated by the permit holder in the Caliomi Valley groundwater basin except for the following. One, onsite wells within the approved Guanac Valley project site. And two, one well within the off-site well site if the Caliomi Valley Water District does not build and operate a well on that site. We did a little wordsmithing in the end, but that covers then the limiting of the establishment or the building, digging of additional wells to tap into that basin.
Does it limit the number of wells onsite?
The wells within the onsite would be approved, and that part is not limited.
So they could have an unlimited number of wells?
Any change, we have assessed environmentally the proposed number of wells. Changes to that could be deemed a modification to the project, but would have to go through additional review.
Any further questions before we open up public comment? All right, I officially open up public comment. If you wish to speak, please state your first and last name, and you'll be given three minutes.
Good afternoon, or good morning, actually, planning commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Reverend Julia Bono, and I represent the Rainbow Church of Living Light in Middletown. I also speak today on behalf of many concerned Middletown residents who have reached out to us in recent months, united in their deep love for our town and their growing alarm about the large proposed Guanac Valley project worker cohousing development planned for Santa Clara Road in central Middletown. As you may know, Middletown is a small, resilient, diverse community. We have endured serious hardships together, including the devastating valley fire that destroyed 80% of our residences, and we continue to rebuild our small town of largely single-family homes with care and intention. At our church, we believe that we have a moral and spiritual responsibility to serve and protect the surrounding land, water, and the community of people who call this place home. After extensive dialogue with local residents, our collective position is clear. The proposed Middletown worker cohousing site on Santa Clara Avenue within walking distance to downtown Middletown is just not appropriate for this town's scale, infrastructure, or cultural character. The intended site lies on R1 zoned land in a high flood risk zone and is surrounded by fire-prone terrain. It does not include double occupancy or something of this concentration. It also poses possible adverse environmental effects on adjacent Dry Creek. I have not seen anything assessing that risk. We have also seen no adequate fire evacuation planning, no clear Middletown infrastructure expansion strategy or funding efforts, no environmental study of the likely impact on Dry Creek, and little meaningful engagement with our residential community most affected. Let me be clear, we are not opposed to the Guanac Valley development. We are opposed to the development that disregards to the will, investments, and well-being of the Middletowners who were living here first. There are over 16,000 acres available at the Guanac Valley project site just a few miles away from Middletown, which is far better suited for high-density worker housing and can be responsibly funded and managed by the project. While we are also concerned over the water well near the junction of Highway 29 and Butts Canyon Road that would likely have drained Middletown's aquifer and caused hardship to the residential flora and our church's exhibition food forest in order to pipe water to the Guanac project, but we now understand and have heard and appreciate that the water facility has been potentially donated or mitigated to the Middletown Caliomi's waters use instead, which we would approve of. We have already submitted multiple letters to Kevin Case of Maha, to Laura Hall of the Planning Department, and others expressing our collective concerns on behalf of Middletown residents and asking pertinent questions with no substantial reply.
Sorry to interrupt, but that is the three minutes. If you would like to give a closing statement.
From here on, okay. We're tag-teaming.
Okay, and please state your first and last name.
My name is Carlos Bono, Reverend with Julia Bono's husband, and I'd like to tag-team. So we are here today again requesting a written proposal and a formal amendment and a formal amendment of existing plans stating that the Middletown worker cohousing site will be removed from the project and resituated either to the Guanac Valley project site or to some more suitable out-of-town site. We initially gave a response deadline of June 1st, but that has now passed without any meaningful written reply that we can show to other community members. If this matter is not addressed promptly and transparently in writing, we If this matter is not addressed promptly and transparently in writing, we need to let you know that we are gathering forces and may need to pursue legal remedies. Still, we remain very hopeful for an amicable resolution after discussing the matter with Kevin yesterday. We urge the Planning Commission to act now with wisdom and integrity to honor the concerned voices of Middletown residents and to guide this project away from stressing our small town and toward a path of responsible land, environmental, and community stewardship. Let me be clear, we do not oppose responsible development. We oppose development that disregards the voices and well-being of those who already live here in Middletown. With sixteen thousand acres available at the Guanac Valley Project a few miles away, there's a more suitable location for high-density housing. One thing can better be managed and funded without overwhelming our town. We appreciate the recent decision to allocate the water facility near Butts Canyon Road to Middletown Caliomi Water District. However, our repeated letters to planners and developers have gone unanswered, and we now ask for a formal written response and an amendment to the project plans removing the Middletown Cohousing Site and relocating it to a more appropriate location outside of town. If this request is not addressed promptly and transparently, we may be forced to pursue legal remedies. Still, we remain hopeful for a peaceful resolution. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration of our concerns.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
And just a reminder to state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Kate Schmidt-Hopper. Thank you, planning commissioners, for allowing me to speak. I'm a thirty-year resident homeowner of South Lake County. I am speaking today as a private citizen and do not represent any organization. My understanding is that today's meeting primarily addresses changes in the Guanac Valley Project Lotusland Investments EIR related to wildfire evacuation and the risk of wildfire ignition as a result of human activities. Of course, now I also know it's a rezoning thing as well. I have something to say on that. So a few questions. When will the Cow Fire Station within the Guanac Valley Project Development be built? Can the county request that the station be part of early Phase One? Development of roads and retail residential facilities, buildings, and undergrounding electrical lines and under infrastructure does carry a risk of human action fire ignition? Does Grange Road, which will be impacted by a connector evacuation road from Guanac Valley Development, already meet the forty-two ninety, forty-two ninety-one fire-safe road requirements standards? If not, which entity will be responsible for the costs of upgrading Grange Road? Caltrans has plans to upgrade safety, upgrade safety along the southern Highway twenty-nine corridor, but will these improvements be completed before completion of Phase One of the Guanac Valley Project because that will impact evacuation safety? The description of Phase One available on the Guanac Valley Project website states that up to five hundred construction workers will be required for the start of the project. Where will those workers live? If onsite, what is the plan to mitigate these extra vehicles on existing evacuation routes prior to the improvements planned by Caltrans along the Highway twenty-nine corridor and the construction of the evacuation connector to Grange Road? My underst, and then I was going to say that maybe we didn't need to rezone the whole thing, but I got an answer to that. So here's another question. We already asked about the location of identified off-site environmental mitigations. It was already stated that they could be up to a hundred miles away. How does this help Lake County and Lake County's environment and Lake County's agricultural preservation if there's a mitigated acreage site that's a hundred miles away, not even within our county? Who will monitor and inspect these conservation acreages? So that, those are my concerns. Thank you so much for this appointment.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello there, good morning, Planning Commission. My name is Amanda Martin. I am the CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Now, I just want to speak in support of the Guanac Valley Resort Project and all of the benefits that it stands to bring Lake County. You know, it presents an opportunity to create lasting economic benefits for our community and also increase our resiliency and our wildfire readiness. There will also be a creation of long-term well-paying jobs, which I think is much welcome and needed in the county, and it will also inject millions of dollars into our local budgets. So that's, that's a huge plus to our county. But what I also wanted to do here is just kind of take off my CEO hat for a moment and just stand before you as Amanda Martin, born and raised here in Lake County, grew up on Cobb Mountain, you know, I'm in the South County, and express a paradox that I've seen in our community's mindset where I respect and appreciate so much all of our citizens' concern and attention on this project and really appreciate everybody who's focusing on every detail and looking out for Lake County and all of our citizens and non-human citizens. But I also just want to point out that sometimes this not-in-our-backyard mentality can also prevent growth and prevent opportunity that that does seem like a positive opportunity for our county. And so while sometimes we can say not in our backyard, we can also have a complaint of there's not enough happening here, or we're not doing a good job at showcasing our resources outside of our county to attract people back into the county, or we're not attracting younger generations to live here and build their lives here. So what I wanted to express is just if we can please keep an open mind with this project and that there are benefits that it's bringing to the county, and also to express my appreciation for everybody's focus and concern, and, and also wanted to say that I appreciate how the developers, especially Kevin Case, are representing and showing up in the community. They have been really responsive to us at the chamber and to all of our members' questions. And so, yeah, those are, those are my remarks, so thank you for hearing those, and I appreciate all of the focus that you have on this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Please be sure to state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Max Hopkins. I'm here today as a private citizen and just wanted to preface my comments by saying I used to sit in your chairs in a different jurisdiction, so I appreciate the amount of time and energy it takes to, to listen to all of us here comment and share our thoughts. I'm here to speak in favor of what I think is just an absolutely excellent project and maybe reiterate some of, some of the comments that the prior speaker made. Not only is this going to have a huge positive impact on the local community and knowing that the tax revenues tend to fluctuate here, I think this is a really important positive addition, and it'll provide a lot of benefits for community, community income. The project will also create a lot of well-paying jobs, not only in the construction of five hundred people that are going to be necessary to build the project, but also long-term once the, once the project is completed. The developers promised workforce training and development programs so that local population can be entered into the workforce and educated and trained appropriately to secure long-term employment and decent livable wages. The project developers also promised a central venue for local commerce so we can benefit locally-owned businesses, resident farmers, artisans, and other community members. We, the wildfire or safety has also been discussed. As I understand it, the project prevention plan has been developed by Lake County Fire Protection and scientists from UC Berkeley, my alma mater, so I think they must have an excellent resource. And a new emergency response center is going to be planned in the development. So thank you all for your attention, and I hope you endorse this project. I think it's an excellent idea and a great addition to Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Greg Folsom, resident of Lake County. I'm also on the Board of Directors of Lake County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a retired city manager with nine years' experience in two cities, including the city of Clearlake, also twenty years of experience in economic development in two other cities. This is just an amazing project that I was excited to hear about when I first, about seven or eight years ago when they first announced it. It's a life, it's a once-in-a-lifetime catalyst-type of development that will be a crown jewel for Lake County. You're going to look back in ten years and go, oh, my God, I was on the Planning Commission when, hopefully, when we approve this, and what a great improvement this has been to the county. It's going to create jobs, generate huge property tax, transient occupancy tax, and sales tax for the county. This project is the type of project that will bring tourists to Lake County who will support our local economy. The homeowners and visitors to the project will buy gas here, buy groceries here, go to wineries here, go to restaurants here, hire local house cleaners, gardeners, landscapers, contractors, and much more. I personally believe that this project will be jet fuel for our economy, and I am here to fully support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Lisa Kaplan. I'm a resident of Hidden Valley Lake, and I have a business and nonprofit in Middletown. I want to first thank you for hearing us, and I want you to know that I'm very nervous right now. So a couple of things I didn't see in the presentation.
Good morning, Lisa. Take a breath.
Thanks, Mom. A couple of things I didn't see. First of all, I want to acknowledge the fact, like deeply, that we have the opportunity to have input and that the first people from this place never did. And I want to take pause and say, can we step back and look at like how we're developing things holistically? I'm not against this project. I just want to see more in-depth conversation and thought put into it. For example, noise was kind of sort of addressed, but the issue of the helicopter, which a whole bunch of residents from Butts Canyon have had a problem with, wasn't addressed. I read parts of the EIR, and it says a couple of things. It says from seven AM to seven PM helicopters could operate. Who wants that after living for years in pristine Butts Canyon, right? What is that? Can we like talk with the residents, come to an agreement, and make that part of this agreement, part of this thing, that the residents will have input on when a limited windows for helicopter noise and helicopter flutter over their heads will be happening? That's one thing. The water is still an issue. I can't speak to that. I don't know enough. The whole development in Middletown, it brings so many questions. First of all, I read seven hundred workers. The MAC was used as a space for people for, to come and get jobs after the valley fire. There weren't seven hundred local workers available then. They were mostly, there were barely any workers, and what happens when these jobs are over to all of these people? Where do they live? Where do they go to school? How does it impact our area? And the schools will be impacted a lot. Will they be impacted enough so that they can build more? And do they have money for that? Or is it just little things? I don't believe that there's adequate healthcare services here either. I also read in the EIR a couple of things. Evacuation would take five hours, and then evacuation would take two hours. I'm really concerned about evacuation. To me, the elephant in the room, no matter how many things, and I say this to Mike also, no matter how many mitigations you put, and with all due respect to all of the effort put in, we need wider roads near Hidden Valley. There's going to be more development there. I'm a valley fire survivor, and there's other people here like that, and I'm telling you, getting out of Hidden Valley was terrible during the valley fire. So imagine adding the Valley Oaks, adding workforce in Middletown, adding all of Guanac, pouring out into the Grange. How are we going to get out? It's frightening, and there's many more people who were traumatized than that, by that event than me. But you can take my tears and you can put them in your bucket of compassion, and you can say, this is something to consider more than what is written so far. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Charles Morse, retired military, thirty-one years. My key point is very simple. Oh, yes. My, my key point is very simple. One hundred percent of the water that goes through Maha makes its way to Lake Barriessa, makes its way to Travis Air Force Base. Every soldier who enters an aircraft, every water buffalo and tanker that goes to places like Singapore, Japan, Taiwan, Australia, Solomon Islands, we even have advisors in places like Vietnam and Malaysia, okay, that we are actively trying to support because the United States and our adversaries need it. Lake Barriessa and Putea Creek, they are connected to whatever we have to do as a nation to protect this beautiful democracy we have right now, all right? This group needs to be vetted. I know it's, it's a difficult process. As a military intelligence guy, you know, I got vetted by everybody. I did not like my boss here in Lake County. I did not like working for the probation department. I didn't know what they were going to say about me, and I could have lost my top-secret clearance, you know? I had the highest clearance you could. That's something that these folks have to go through, okay? It's the reality we live in. You cannot walk in this building, you cannot walk by these children and all five thousand children serving right now and say, okay, we're going to let these guys without vetting, you know, by the US government, the government, the GAO and Department of Agriculture, Department of Defense, you know, without these guys getting vetted by the people who are responsible for taking care of all of us and our democracy. Worst-case scenario, it would be a really bad idea, okay? The Congress built that dam, and they plugged up our, our Putea Creek in our basin right here, every drop of water so that if there's a contingency for food security and water security, that the United States can survive, okay? We can't act like that's not going to exist. We can't sit here and say, oh, gosh, you know, we're going to have unlimited amount of jelly beans and rainbows now because we have somebody coming in with a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. God bless this, this group, God bless this family if they can pass the vetting process, okay? But to act like it doesn't exist and act like the world is not, is, is, is not as big as it is right now, it's just going to be a horrible situation. I am not going to, I don't want to try, you know, I don't want to create, you know, some type of xenophobia because I have family who are threatened by the same groups, you know, in Singapore, you know, in Taiwan, in Japan, I know all these places, and all those countries are being told and being, and being shot at. We need to know where the money comes from. Does it come from our adversaries, and is it going to hurt our kids, all five thousand kids from this little county?
That is your three-minute mark, sir, if you would like to close your comment.
God bless you. Make the right decision. Don't approve this until they have, the due diligence has been done, you know? Because I had to go through it, they should have to go through it. It doesn't matter how much money you say you're going to spend or how many promises you're going to make. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Catherine Vanderwal, Agricultural Commissioner for Lake County. I would not be doing my job if I did not get up here and say something. Part of my role is to protect and promote agriculture. The concern isn't Phase One of this project. There's discussion of removing just over three hundred acres of prime farmland. Those lands are designated based on their soil type, so to simply say that they're acres are going to be swapped for acres needs to be considered because, again, agricultural land gets its designation based on soil type. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Chair Chavez and Commissioners, Margot Cambara, Lake CAP, Community Action Project. At this time, we respectfully request that the Planning Commission, one, not certify the PREIR, the Partially Revised Environmental Impact Report. It inadequately It inadequately addresses wildfire hazard mitigation and wildfire evacuation planning. Two, strongly consider alternative C described in findings of fact and statement of overriding consideration. Three, if alternative C is rejected, recommend against the requested general plan amendment and rezone of the project area to commercial resort for the unplanned remainder of the project. 13,000 acres. The first topic, wildfire mitigation. The final EIR falls short. The project estimates, quote, "Under full buildout, the project evacuation trips are estimated to add up to approximately 2-point hours for 100% evacuation of South County, when combined with evacuation trips from the surrounding communities," end quote. This does not seem to be a wise trade-off for promised economic development. South County has recent history of surviving devastating and deadly wildfires. Two-and-a-half-hour delay can be life-threatening. One of the project's strategies for wildfire evacuation is by air. The project's plan does not account for limitations of air evacuation, good visibility, little or no smoke, and daylight. Few pilots fly at night. Air evacuation would take days. More attention in the P R E I R should be devoted to the description of and strategy for temporary refuge areas. The P R E I R doesn't acknowledge the health and safety mitigations required by federal and state law for building the proposed emergency egress, the Grange Road Connector. Lake County GIS parcel viewer shows that the parcels along Grange Road connect, excuse me, contain serpentine, requiring safety protocols and pavement for the road to be drivable. Two, alternative C. Community members who value open space, the county's rural and agricultural nature, see potential in alternative C as a compromise for the community, county, and the developer. The developer's reluctance to reduce the number of housing units is understandable, but if maximum or high profit margin is a developer's criterion to be an acceptable alternative, then it is possible that there is no, no alternative can be crafted. Three, the P R, P R E I R for Phase One, covering approximately 3,000 of the 16,000 acres designed for future development.
Sorry to interrupt, Margot, but that is the three minutes.
It was.
If you would like to just close your comment?
Yes. Well, thank you very much for your consideration. This is a very important issue before the, your commission. There doesn't seem to have been enough time granted for your commission to read all the materials and weigh all the input from the community. It would be very understandable if your, your commission decided that this needed to be continued. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Tom Lasik. Good morning, Commissioners. This project, the EIR, was rejected because of the wildfire consideration. And so it's re, it's come back because they apparently have revised it. So let's just take a look at their evacuation plan, which, if you're looking at their own numbers, you're looking at approximately 4,000 to 6,000 people in that, in that valley. According to their own scenario, at 4:00 p.m., the alarm sounds, and they are required of mandatory evacuation. As we all know, lived through fires, and I think just about everybody here who's lived here has had to evacuate, you're supposed to be out of there in minutes, not hours. So let's pretend for a moment they're given an hour. Out of the almost 6,000 or 5,000 people, let's just use 5,000, they plan to evacuate 25% of them, which is 1,250 people, by air, using small, private, little aircrafts that seat two to four people. Yeah, that doesn't make sense. So imagine, okay, you can take off one every five minutes. You know, you got wheels up, five minutes later, wheels up, you're taking two to four people. In one hour, you've got maybe 50 people out of there. What happens to the other 1,150 or more? Maybe you're lucky, maybe you get another hour of time, get another 50 people out. Now it's dark. Airspace is closed. You can't fly anybody out until the next day. Those people are trapped. Now, if you take a look at the remaining people, they want to remove 10% of them by bus, shuttle bus. Do they have enough shuttle buses for 370 people? Once you leave, you can't come back. The rest of them are vehicles, and they have some sort of gentleman's agreement that everybody's only going to take one vehicle out. The models show that at a minimum, it will take with a single lane out over three hours, and you only have one hour to get out. And it takes 20 minutes to drive that road. If you put in two lanes out, you can reduce that to about an hour and a half, but you still have people trapped. It's only when you have three lanes out that you have the possibility to get everyone evacuated. Now, just to put this in context, the largest air evacuation of a wildfire occurring in Canada, where they evacuated 8,000 people using Chinooks, military cargo planes, 777s, Air Canada Airbus 330s, it was a major, major operation with huge planes, and it took days. And they want to do it in a couple hours. It just does not add up. It probably won't survive another sequence challenge just on the wildfire plan. I suggest you seriously take a look at that. And just finally, and to close, I don't think anybody's here against the project itself. No one here has set up and said, not in my backyard. Everybody's here is concerned about water and fire and roads. That's the issue, and they really haven't been properly addressed. And you haven't given, been given the time to even look at the material in a, in a decent way. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Just as a reminder, please state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Brandon McDonald. I'm a resident of Pope Valley, and I'd like to speak in favor of the project. As a Pope Valley resident, I've, I've watched people driving through to work over in the Napa Valley and south, and over into Santa Rosa, quite a bit of traffic. And selfishly, I think it'd be cool that people could actually work in Lake County and not have to drive elsewhere. So, I grew up in St. Helena, and it's a flashy little town now, but it wasn't when I was a kid. And I remember since I was a tiny guy, it was a no-growth, no-growth. We've said it, not in my backyard. That's a little town where it was realized. And while flashy, we watched everything else grow around it. And from my limited knowledge, our little town is broke. It, it doesn't make sense. And so the, the view of the economy on this, I think the, the development team has done a very diligent job running through all the channels required by the state of California and the county here. And through thorough review of those plans and the staff level review, we have to rely on all those channels to get through because none of us have enough time to look at absolutely every document everywhere. So on that front, I think we should have it. It's obviously not my call. Selfishly, I'm a builder. I love that. I love development, and, you know, if you ain't growing, you're dying. And, you know, Lake County's been hit pretty hard here over the last few years. I'd love to see more jobs. I'd love to see a growth. I'd love to see an economy that's booming. This happened before multiple times. Remember, I wasn't around for it, but the, what's that development there on the lake? Down here on the bottom? Canuckdie, Canuckdie Resort. That was the boomingest time I hear from all of my older friends. They said this was just the greatest thing that ever happened. Lake County was a spot where everybody came, there were vacation homes, it was just the tale of old. And that's been hit. I mean, I haven't been around for all of it, but I've watched it happen. We've got old dilapidated buildings, and this, this area needs a shot. I think this project's going to be a good shot for it and bring more jobs. With that comes housing. It's always a compromise. Nobody wants it right in their yard, but got to grow responsibly. And I think with that, the review's been there, and we should go with that. Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning. My name is Weston Seifert. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So I think that this is, I'm here to speak in favor of the project. I think this is a really important moment for Lake County. I sit on a couple of different boards. One, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce from a situation of stimulating our economy and, and being able to put Lake County in a, in a position to be able to grow, I think is really important. I also sit on a board, the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, in developing workforce for Lake County, I think also is equally important. This is, you know, a lot of what I do now is, is not for me, and not even necessarily for my kids, but it is for their kids, right? We are looking at something that has the opportunity to transform Lake County in, in the next 20 years, right? I think first phase is like nine years, something like that. And the amount of workforce that it'll have the opportunity to provide, the economic stimulation that it'll provide, the tourism that we'll be able to bring in, all really important. So that's my two cents. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning. I'm Robert Bocabella with Business Design Services and the Window Design Studio. I have an office here in Lakeport, and I live in the Riviera. I moved up here 15 years ago from Petaluma, and I, I came to the county because it was affordable, and I believed that Lakeport and the county was in a place where Petaluma was when I started my business in 1983. It didn't turn out as exactly as I imagined. I am totally supportive of this project, design, all of it. These people have worked hard to put together a very beautiful project. As an interior designer, I was in Brentwood yesterday. I'm getting really tired of driving out of this county for employment. Please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Don Smith. I'm the current president of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, and I am here to express our chamber's board and, and membership's strong support for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Development. I'm also Director of Community Wellbeing for one of the largest health organizations here in the county, and I'm responsible around, every three years, we do a community health needs assessment. And our most current needs assessment, economic, this is done across multiple organizations in the county that deal with health issues. And our most recent one has come up, one of the primary priorities for the next three years will be around economic opportunities for people and how it's impact on their overall health. And so we see this project as a catalyst for improving the health metrics of our county. So I appreciate your consideration for this project.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name's Bill Waite. I'm a resident of Hidden Valley, and I've been involved in this county for about 20 years, one way or the other. I am also on the Board of Directors for Math, but I am speaking individually. I also, in the past, have been president and vice president for Hidden Valley Lake for six years, and I was the last director here during the valley fire. And I stayed here. What I am concerned about, everybody's brought up good ideas, there's no sense in being redundant on that. My comment relates to you and Lake County. Is Lake County ready for this? Has Lake County looked at all the infrastructure changes that are going to have to be made, needed, and supported in order to be able to bring all of this to fruition within our county? We have an outstanding opportunity here. I'm in favor of the project, everything along the line, but I know our roads are not ready for this. I know our, our health organizations are not ready for this. Our retail is not ready for this growth, I don't think. It means an increase in the Sheriff Department. It means an increase all across the board. All of that takes a big commitment from the county and planning in advance, and I don't see that. And as much as I've been involved in, in being involved with our people throughout the community, I don't see where that's being communicated to us, that the county is ready to make the sacrifices that they're going to have to make. When we look at the road structure and everything else that's around here, we do have Caltrans that's going to be coming in and doing a presentation to us on what's going to be happening with Highway 29. That's just part of it. Butts Canyon is going to have a major practice. I was here with the valley fire. Hidden Valley Lake has about a 6,000 to 7,000-person population. We couldn't get out, and I saw cars burn, people trouble, heavy stuff. We have to be, commit to that. And if you're going to double that with all the other structure that's going on, is Hidden Valley, or is Lake County ready to take on that, that task? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning. My name is Shannon Sanders. I'm from Middletown, actually on Butts Canyon. I just, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. It's a big decision. I'm really, really a hundred percent for this project. The more I looked into it, the more I liked it. I guess you could say there's going to be, there's consequences if you, if you do the project, there's consequences if you don't do the project. The, I talked to a lot of young folks, a lot of builders, but just, just a lot of people in the community. And the universal thing, they're all starving and striving to get work. And some of them lament about having to go leave the area. Just, just the other day, I spoke to a contractor, a big brick of a guy, and he goes, Will Shannon, after this project, I'm not sure what I'm going to do. And I said, well, there might be an opportunity for you. And I told him about the project, the resort, and he goes, it almost looked like he was tearing up. He said, well, there might be jobs. I can stay here with my son. And I've heard that over and over again. As I said, the, the project really, to me, this resort, their product is to maintain the scenic beauty. That's, they, they have a vested interest in making that place desirable and beautiful. That's why so much of, even the golf course is, that they propose is going to respect the, the natural flow of things. They're going out of their way to maintain it because that's really all they have, is this natural beauty. So that, I'm encouraged by that. And the, the thing that I'm also amazed about is that, and I didn't even know this initially, but a development like this actually can lessen the risk of wildfire. They had some empirical data earlier in the presentation that showed that things would be, fire waves would be postponed. But to me, there's, like I said, there's always, if you do it or if you don't do it, but I think it's, it's really going to be a gift and a blessing to the community in so many ways. So I just really encourage you to do your best, and hopefully we'll get this thing through. And that's just my opinion, of course, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to take a couple hands in the Zoom room. We have Rebecca.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your first and last name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Harper. I'm the Executive Director for the Farm Bureau. I'm here today to express some serious concerns about the proposed rezoning of agricultural land as part of the Gwinoc Valley project. As currently proposed, this development would permanently convert over 300 acres As currently proposed, this development would permanently convert over 300 acres of prime, unique, and important farmland, some of the best soil in our region, into residential and commercial uses. Your own environmental review makes clear, this would have a significant and unavoidable impact on Lake County agriculture. We believe there's a better path forward, one that supports thoughtful development without undermining the very resources our communities depend on. Protecting working lands must be part of any long-term vision for sustainable community growth. Agriculture is not just a land use, it's a way of life, a local economic engine, and a cornerstone of our identity in Lake County. This project as designed is incompatible with the surrounding agricultural landscape. Introducing luxury estates, commercial infrastructure, and resort amenities into a historically agricultural valley invites conflict, whether through increased trespassing, dust and noise complaints, or mounting pressure to curtail normal farming operations. Right-to-farm disclosures and buffer zones may help on paper, but in practice, they are not enough to preserve the long-term viability of neighboring farming operations. We are also wary of the narrative that this project will usher in broad economic prosperity. The promise of an economic windfall should not come at the expense of irreplaceable farmland. Prime soils, once lost, cannot be replaced. Open space and rural character cannot be rezoned back into existence once paved over. The Farm Bureau remains committed to working with stakeholders to find solutions that allow for growth without sacrificing the foundation of our local economy. We urge you to reject this rezoning request as proposed and to explore alternative approaches that prioritize agricultural preservation alongside responsible planning. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. We have a guest on Zoom. Be sure to state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Chairman Commissioners, my name is Angela Amaral. I'm not sure, I had, there was trouble, as Director Turner stated, with the e-comment system, so I was not able to get my comments uploaded, but I did send them out to all the Commissioners via email. I am not sure if you received it, so I am going to read some of the points in it. I was writing to highlight some of the information from the Gwinoc Valley Project, the Wildfire Risk and Evacuation Assessment, which was your Appendix H1 dated January 2024, specifically pages 51 and 52, which I had attached to my comment that I emailed. On page 51 of the 2024 assessment, it is stated that evacuation trips by 10% of the residents and 15% of the guests will be by plane or helicopter for a total of 25%. Based on those estimated totals of evacuation trips of 4,511 that they state on page 52, the estimated trips by planes or helicopters would be around 1,127. On Tuesday, July 22nd, the Middletown Area Town Hall had a special meeting at which Mr. Kevin Case from Gwinoc Valley Project attended via phone. Mr. Case was asked about the use of planes and helicopters for evacuation, to which Mr. Case laughed and said he hadn't read that one. A follow-up question was asked if Mr. Case was saying that the statements were made in, that the statements made in the Wildfire Risk and Evacuation Assessment were wrong. Mr. Case responded that, "No, he had just not seen them and wanted more clarification himself." For the Planning Commission's consideration, is the use of helicopters and planes for evacuation of 25% of the estimated population a viable option? During a fire, there can be many different types of firefighting aircraft in the air, as we all know. Even the use of personal drones are restricted as to not hinder firefighting efforts. Has Cal Fire or local fire departments been consulted regarding the use of planes and helicopters in an evacuation area during a fire? If visibility is lower at zero due to smoke, which would excessively hinder evacuations by plane or helicopter, will the estimated number of air evacuations need to be reconsidered in the overall numbers for vehicle evacuations? To hear a representative of the Gwinoc Valley Project say that he was not aware of the use of planes or helicopters for evacuation is somewhat concerning. The number of people that are estimated to evacuate via air are not minuscule numbers. Additionally, I was unable to find mention of any temporary refuge areas or referred to as TRAs in any of the evacuation plans. Is there a proposal for TRAs in the event that people at the Gwinoc Valley Project need to shelter in place? I just want to point out that this is one of the biggest projects in Lake County history, and I think it deserves a high level of scrutiny, especially on the evacuation pressure that we're likely going to experience from this. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Since we're still on Zoom, are there any more hands? All right, we'll take one more guest from Zoom, and then I'll bring it back to the chambers.
My name is Richard Durham. I've lived in Lake County for 34 years. I've raised two children here. Unfortunately, there was no jobs for them in Lake County, so they are no longer residents of the county. I've been waiting all these years for projects like this to come along and help the community. The tax base will be huge. Our schools will be better, our roads will be better. I went out on a small tour of the project, maybe two months ago, three months ago, and I was totally impressed. The people that are going to inhabit that neighborhood will bring much-needed revenue to Lake County. When you see the project in its totality, what an amazing thing. It will put Lake County on a different bet, and we've needed that. It's going to be low impact to the county because it's at the other end of the county. And if you ever get a chance to take a tour out there, wow. They're very thoughtful about their construction, the style of buildings, the location of them all. I'm totally for the project, and I know that Lake County needs a revenue. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so I'll bring it back to the chambers. If anybody else wishes to speak, come to the podium, state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Jim Comstock. I do live on Greens Road. My family came to Lake County 82 years ago on the existing ranch that we live right now. I happen to be 75 years old, lived there my entire life, other than going to college and four years in the Navy, so I'm quite familiar with South Lake County. Been neighbors to the Gwinoc Ranch for my entire life and for the 82 years that we've been there. There, they've always been extremely good neighbors, we've worked very well together. This development is a game changer for our county. Having served on the school board for 18 years and as Board Supervisor for eight years, one of my major concerns was our youth, we graduated from high school, get my diploma and a bus ticket because there were not economic opportunities and career opportunities in abundance for them. This is an opportunity to change that. No community is successful till you have multi-generations of families able to live, work, and sustain their opportunities here. And this is one of those opportunities that we have, that we have not have here. Now, talking about fire mitigation, I'm obviously very concerned about wildfires. We've been involved in many of those. This project mitigates fire challenges in our area with the infrastructure that they will be putting in, the water projects. We, in South County, will be protected better with the fire mitigations that they have than we have right now. There's a lot of brush rocks and rattlesnakes on the Gwinoc Ranch, and a good portion of that is going to be handled and mitigated with the fire protection that is being planned. I am very excited about the fire protection that they're going to provide. It will, I'm from a selfish nature, my ranch is going to be better protected because of that. And if my ranch is better protected than that, so are all of our neighbors, which happens to include Hidden Valley Lake. I want to state that I am totally in favor of this project for the economic reasons, for the fire mitigation reasons, and our family has been here, I said, for 82 years. We plan on being here for many, many more generations. Our goal is to always preserve our ranch for future generations. This project helps us preserve our way of life for future generations, and for all of the reasons I've stated, I am 100% supportive and in favor of this project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. My name is Rob, excuse me, my name is Rob Hodel, and I represent the project applicant. And just wanted to correct the record, and there were a couple, there were some misstatements about the number of helicopter and plane trips that were assumed in the evacuation analysis, and it is not 25% of the population, it is not over 1,000 residents. It's actually looking at page 51 of the Appendix H1 to the P R E R. It says that 10% of the evacuation trips by estate residents and 15% by hotel unit guests were assumed to be by plane or helicopter. That doesn't add up to 25% of the overall population, which is just a math error that a few people have made. And for Phase 1, that actually equates to the residence of about 40 estate units and 40 residential resort or hotel units, so a much smaller number. And for, so total of 80 units in Phase 1 that would need to be, have their population evacuated by helicopter or plane, or were assumed to be. For the total build-out of the entire project, that comes to around 140 estate units, is 10% of the estate units, and 15% of the residential resort and hotels comes to 128 units. So it's about 268 total. Also, much lower, substantially lower than the totals that have been stated by some of the commenters. And also just wanted to mention Kevin, I was just talking to Kevin Case, and he had mentioned that he had, when he heard the 25% number, that was what he reacted to and said he had not heard that before, and that's because it was actually not a correct statement of what's in the documents. So thank you for your time and consideration.
My name is Fletcher Thornton, and I live in Middletown and was a victim of the fire, and I understand all that. Someone asked me, you know, I help politicians get on boards and things because I believe I have an obligation to help. Someone asked me, what's the first criteria for being on a board such as this? And I always say the same thing, courage. It takes courage to be up there. It's a tough job, and I know that. And you're going, you hear all kinds of things. People worry about things, and rightly so. I worry about things. But thank goodness, we have a staff at the county, from my area right down to the lowest building department person, that looks at things and works hard to make sure that we're as protected as we can be. This project will turn South County in particular around, there's no doubt about it. The day they closed on it, the assessment, just the money to the county, went up a million dollars, the day they closed it. And just take that and think about all the hotels, the TOT taxes and all that. Yes, we have problems with roads. How do you fix roads? With money. It's not done by good wishes and all that, it's money. And the county continually struggles to make ends meet. I know that because they come to our town hall and ask us to support tax increases. There's only two ways to raise money. That's to get more money from the people you have available that are there, that you're taxing, or bring in new people to get more money. New people are hard to get. We have an opportunity right now. You have an opportunity right now to make a terrible difference in our way of life in South County. So I ask you to have courage and do what's right, and help this county get to the point where it should be and be a crown jewel instead of at the bottom of the economic rung in California. So I thank you for your hard work, I know it's tough, and just stay in there and do the best you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing from us. My name is Lauren Chase. I'm a third-generation organic rig grower, and I'm also involved in the heavy civil contracting. This, I'm strong support of this project. What it will bring to this community and to the county of Lake is phenomenal. It will bring jobs, it will bring development, it will bring development of people once this project is built. It is, it's a shining star for Lake County, and I strongly support everything that they're doing. They're doing a great due diligence of what they're being pushed through. Knowing the contracting world that I do, I will guarantee that every dot and every T is crossed before they get to step and break ground out there, and I think that it would be a huge miss for Lake County not to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anyone in the Zoom room? All right, no hands in the Zoom room. Anybody in the chambers wishes to give one last comment? It'll still be open, I was just, I didn't see anybody else wanting to come to speak, so.
My name is Cheryl Doggila. I kind of want to reiterate, I want to reiterate what most other people have said, that I am in support of this project. The project represents a unique opportunity to bring sustainable growth and economic vitality to Lake County. The Gwinoc Valley Project is designated, or designed with a commitment to environmental stewardship and responsible development. It will create jobs, boost local businesses, all while minimizing impacts to the natural beauty and economic resources. The developers have worked hard and diligently to ensure the project aligns with the community values and long-term goals. Moreover, the project will provide significant tax increases to the property tax base, it will help the community. It is a forward-thinking plan that balances growth and sustainability. I urge the Planning Commission to move forward with the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to take one last look in the Zoom, at the chambers, if anybody wishes to come
Hi there. My name is Alyssa Moreland, and I live in Lake County, I live in Lakeport, and I work at the Granite Construction Quarry off of Highway 175. I would like to thank you first and foremost for giving me the opportunity to speak to you regarding the Gwinoc Valley Development Project. I support this project because it will provide significant employment opportunities, not just for those of us in the construction industry, but also it will provide long-term, high-quality jobs for the members of Lake County. There will be jobs for hospitality workers, managers, maintenance crews, ranch hands, not to mention the use and maintenance of utilities. I also believe that the increased tourism that will occur as a result of the project will help with sustaining local small businesses and revitalizing the county. Additionally, the increased property taxes and revenues from this project will allow us to invest more into development of our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
And I want to thank you for being here, because if you look around the room, you're probably the oldest person here.
One last look in the Zoom room. Don't believe we have anyone else. And one last look in the chambers. All right, so I'll be closing public input, and we will bring it back to the commission for further questions from staff or from the applicants, so public input is closed. Does anybody have any questions?
My, my one question is, will we hear from the applicant? Because I think as you're going to find out that we probably have some questions that perhaps the applicant and/or the county can... perhaps the applicant and/or the county can answer. Thank you.
We do have a team representing the applicant that would be available, should you have any questions. But we did not have a set-aside presentation. We integrated the slides from the environmental side into our, our overall presentation.
Um, I have some comments I'd like to make, and I'd like to have some discussion if that would be appropriate. First of all, I'd like to compliment the staff on the enormous effort, intelligence and skill that went into these documents. And I have to say, I've only had five days. I haven't read them all. So I'm not ready to make a decision today, but this really helps, hearing from everybody. I agree with just about everything that's been said. Uh, I think that we can proceed with this project with a few minor changes. I don't know if those changes will be possible, so those are the things that I'd like to discuss. But what I'd like to share with you is that I did go on a tour of the property, and I was able to talk with Mr. Case and the fellow Randy who has been managing the ranch there for 45 years, and I learned a lot. So I just wanted to share those things. I asked about the impacts on local schools, and I was told that the target market is urban dwellers seeking second or third homes. Correct me if I misinterpreted anything that I heard from you. The development team does not expect this project to affect local schools. Another comment I have is, having toured just a corner of the project, the roads that have been installed have been done with great aesthetic appeal. They're beautifully done. They're not just plowed straight through. They follow the contours of the land, and it looks like they pretty much avoid the bigger trees. I did ask about the, there were a few ugly roads, or places where paths had been just blown through the hills, and I was told that those were fire breaks. I did see a huge burn pile of unidentifiable mature trees that concerned me a little bit. And I heard through the grapevine that they've already taken out many mature oaks or have attempted to move them, so I'm concerned about that. I'd like to put something in writing, if we could, about mature tree removal, restricting it. Generally, my impression of this project, or the small corner of it I saw, it really appears to be taking into consideration the aesthetics naturally offered by the property. So that's the kind of thing that I think Lake County really needs, is this kind of project. I was told that water consumption will depend on surface water retention as well as several 500-foot-deep wells. I'd like to know what geologists know about the aquifers. Maybe it's in this huge pile of reading material we were given, but I haven't found it yet. So maybe someone can direct me if that has already been done. I do have a lot of questions, but a lot of them have been addressed, so I'd like to just hear what anyone else has to say while I go through those.
I'm sorry, you just reminded me, before we move on, I have some disclosures I should make, as well as my fellow commissioner indicated that she toured the site. So just to share with everyone in the room, as many of you know, I know many of you in the room, so we've served together, worked, worked together in various different capacity or we're, we're developed friends. But a couple of things I did want to share for contacts and visits is, early on in my appointment as Planning Commissioner, I did meet with, with Fire Chief Mike Wink and Helen Owen, and during that meeting, we spoke about other things, but we also did speak a little bit about the Gwinoc Valley Project and reviewed a map that he had there in the room. On March 19th, I went out for a site visit and met with Kevin Case and Jonathan at the Gwinoc Ranch. We watched a, or I watched a 30-minute video, and they took me on a tour of the site and reviewed several maps there also that were on display. And at that time, Kevin had also mentioned the potential agreement with Caliomi Water District in regard to the off-site well. See, on June 11th, I attended the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, held a mixer at the Greenview Restaurant in Hidden Valley Lake, and Kevin Case and another representative from Gwinoc were there and did a presentation on the project. On July 8th, I spoke with Kevin Case on the phone, and that conversation was kind of a check-in conversation. We spoke about the project and touched on a few concerns, many of which have been brought up here today. Prior to being a Planning Commissioner, prior to my reappointment to Planning Commissioner, I have crossed, and by the way, I was a Planning Commissioner back in 2008, 2009, until Mr. Comstock took office. And, um, let's see, so prior to my reappointment as Planning Commissioner, I have crossed paths with the Gwinoc Valley Project on numerous occasions. I attended the Planning Commission hearing and Board Supervisor hearing back in 2020 via Zoom. I am also, as it was brought up today, there was a presentation by Margot from the CAP Organization, the Community Action Project. I was a founding member of that organization as well, and resigned from that when I was appointed as Planning Commissioner. I am the Chair of the Math Group. So as Chair, on behalf of Math, I organized a special meeting to discuss the Gwinoc Valley Project and submitted a letter in 2020 on behalf of the Plan, on behalf of Math. The Math, as I think you heard in today's hearing thus far, is that Math held an additional, or held a special meeting on the 22nd, and I did not attend that meeting. I have also signed my name to a letter submitted to the Planning Commission by a neighbor of the off-site worker housing, and my name, of course, is on a letter that was submitted on behalf of, of Math. And to that point, too, as somebody had said, they were waiting for replies on letters in the final P R E I R. All letters that were submitted are included in, in that, and responses to those letters are there, including the ones that have my name on it. So I thought I should fully disclose that. Math recently held another special meeting on this proj, uh, I've already stated that. Oh, on September 11th, um, my, my mugshot appeared in the Record B alongside Mariaa Turner, Director of Community Development, um, at a meeting that, that Community Development had arranged at the Calpine Center to discuss this project, of which I attended. The project has been around for a good number of years. As you can see, I'm kind of an active community member, and it's really hard to avoid crossing paths with such a big project as this. So, but I do want to assure everybody that I look forward to serving as Planning Commissioner today or in the future, should we, in regard to this topic, as other issues come up, to listen, to hear, and to be as objective and fair as I can as a District 1 Planning Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any other questions or concerns about the project?
Can I just have a clarification on the 300 acres of ag land and the exchange? And was a comment made that it can be mitigated, excuse me, within 100 miles of the project? Could you just give me more clarification on that, please?
Yes, as written, the measure allows for the conserved agricultural land to be within a 100-mile radius of the site. It must be of the same quality as what is being impacted, and conservation easements are typically held by a dedicated land trust or other organization who would do that long-term monitoring with an endowment.
So how would that work? Would the Lotus Land Investments purchase 300 or however many acres?
Typically, I think that would be an option if they so chose, but there is also the ability to just fund the conservation easement aspect without purchasing the land. But that's, that's all I have.
Thanks.
So I would like to have a wonderment whether that 300 acres in the full scope of the project can be mitigated within, within the many thousands of acres, or not many thousands, but the 1,600 acres. And I don't know that you have an answer, but I was just putting that forward, that that might be some way to address that in a, in a straightforward fashion.
As written, the mitigation measure would not prohibit them from conserving the onsite land if they so chose.
Thank you. Uh, one more, another question. The roads, are they going to be public or private roads?
You may have stumped me.
Let me pose that question another way. I'm trying to visualize this. Will this community be gated?
The only gate that I'm aware of to prohibit public access is the Grange Road Connector Gate, because that is not intended to be an access point in any events, or in regular traffic, only in the event of emergencies.
So any jailbys will be able to drive around and admire the beauty of the area?
Correct. It would not be closed for anyone that's not like a resident or a hotel visitor. There would be public markets and restaurants and other amenities that would be available.
So I from Kelseyville could at any time go down and have dinner at the restaurant there?
If you so chose.
Thanks.
My question was not as much as that, but is in maintenance of the, of the roads. Is it a public or private obligation?
I believe the applicant can answer that question?
Yeah.
I can actually help with that. Historically, the Board of Supervisors requires an offer of dedication with a subdivision map for those roads for public access. Typically, an offer of dedication to be entered into the county-maintained road is also offered, but without exception, denied by the Board since I've been here. So they will accept it for public access. They will not add it to their county-maintained road inventory.
Thank you.
While we're talking about roads, has there been a traffic study done? And if so, where is it?
Yes, there was a traffic study done for the 2020 E I R, and so that would be found as an Appendix T I S to the 2020 E I R.
A question that came up from one of the public input letters was on the Dark Sky ordinance in Lake County. I guess it's an ordinance, isn't it an ordinance?
It's more of a policy.
Thank you.
Is it, what specifically is the question?
Is, is that ordinance going to be taken in, be respected?
Yes. So the project has been designed, both the Gwinoc Valley Site and the Middletown Housing Site, to comply with the Dark Sky policies.
Thank you.
Okay, greenhouse gas emissions. I noticed each home is going to be provided an electrical vehicle charging station, which brings up another issue I have not seen addressed, other than the 50 acres allotted for alternative energy. Maybe I missed it. How much power will be needed, and where will it come from? And are any photovoltaic installations specifically planned? And I mean, I'm, I need to understand how this project will affect the local grid. I noticed that there was a comment from PG&E. I haven't gotten through all the details of it yet.
Yes, there are solar fields planned and shown on the site plan in addition to the solar panels that would be installed per the California Green Building Code on commercial and residential structures.
And will that be adequate to serve the entire needs of the community?
That is one of the project commitments, or the settlement agreement commitments, is that the project is going to use entirely renewable energy that's generated onsite.
Awesome, thank you.
Question on the, on the housing. In the, um, the plan, I didn't notice whether or not there's going to be low-income housing available?
To my knowledge, it is all market-rate housing.
Thank you.
There was a question in the area of evacuation plan, and I think the gentleman, they got up and spoke about the air traffic, clarified that piece of it. But what about temporary reserve areas? I believe Angela maybe had asked that question on a Zoom.
Yes, so temporary refuge areas are part of the updated wildfire prevention plan, but as those would be folks that are sheltering on-site, they would not contribute to the traffic analysis for the evacuation analysis that was done. So to be more conservative, the analysis that was done did not assume a certain proportion of people would be using those temporary refuge areas. It assumed 100% of folks would evacuate, that they are available.
I've been looking at the map, and my, my feeling, just looking at the evacuation route that is proposed, is that it isn't going to serve the entire community. It's just kind of in the corner, near the existing routes. But I'm not an expert in this, and I'd like to hear from the fire guys about this. Maybe, Monica, can you tell me what Mr. Wink had to say? If you remember?
He is here with us today. Can we invite him up to comment?
He seems to be hiding in the back, however. You've been asked to speak, Mr. Wink, if you'd like to. If not, that's fine, too.
Do we have to reopen public comment?
I'm just wondering if you've had time to take a look at this project, and I'd like to know what you think about it, if that's appropriate.
I will have to open public comment for this if he chooses to speak. And we're just waiting for direction from the director. So with that being said, before we move on, I'll open public, uh, public input for this project again, so that the chief can speak.
So my name is Mike Wink. I work for Cal Fire, and I just checked with Community Development Director Mariaa Turner to make sure it was okay that I provide comment on behalf of the county. And so specifically, what is the exact question you'd like me to answer? Again?
I'm, I'm very concerned about egress, whether people can get out if there's a fire from this development project. And I've seen the map with the proposed road that goes to Grange Road, and I understand there's been an easement obtained. And just when I look at that map, it doesn't look to me like it would work. But I'm not an expert. I don't know how traffic works and how fires move. So I'm wondering, if you've taken a look at it, have you evaluated it?
The, the, the road to, meets the State Fire Safety Regulations, Public Resource Code 4290, so it has to be 20 feet wide and be all-weather service. And so that is the requirement for a road. And so it does meet that requirement. And then it has to connect to, it connects to another road that meets that same requirement, then connects to the highway, and those all meet those requirements.
Okay.
Those are the requirements, and it does meet that standard.
Okay, thank you very much. I also was wondering if you'd be able to address the issue of flights during a fire emergency? emergency? I don't know if you heard what was said about the 268 people, I think it was, who would be evacuated by helicopter and small plane? Is that feasible? Is that something that could be done during a fire emergency, do you think?
Yeah, that's not anything that I would be able to provide comment on.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could also just speak to the roads improvements that were done to directly address the wildfire. They were further developed with the hardscape on either side, widening that sort of fire break-ish use on those roads, as well as removing some of that outer peripheral housing and instead clustering it within the main area. So that would reduce evacuation times from some of our, some of the formerly more remote visitors.
And public input is still open? So if anybody wishes to speak, come to the podium, state your first and last name and you'll have three minutes.
Tom Lasik again, just to clarify that we're all talking the same thing, the same way. The representative from the applicant said that was for a phase one build out. My numbers were for the full build out. And the full build out, according to their own data, has, well, 400 hotel rooms, which average typical is 2.5% occupancy, 450 resort units, which is about 2% per unit, 1,400 residential estates, which is about 2.5, excuse me, the hotels usually 1.5, and 500 workforce, you know, the Chad's and Biff's that run around helping drive shuttles and whatnot. So that's a lot of people. Yeah, 10% of it instead of 25, okay, but now you're not talking 1,200, you're still talking hundreds. So it's a distinction without a difference. It's not really addressed. I think the right thing to do and what's best advised is to widen the roads. If you have enough rent lanes out, you don't have an issue. That's really the concern. I just think that the, the airlift is not practical, mostly the small planes, the pilots aren't licensed for night flying, they're not licensed, the planes aren't certified for night flying, and the airspace is typically closed during a fire to any activity. And in their own scenario, you're given at most two hours, maybe two and a half before sunset. So it's a very difficult situation and it's just not practical when you just do the basic math. So just a clarification, yes, the phase one is smaller, but I was speaking to the full build out. And that's what I would expect the whole plan to encompass. Thank you.
If I may provide further clarification, the EIR that you have before you is covering phase one. In order for future expansion for other phases, we would require further analysis, possibly modifications of the proposed, given the conditions at that time.
Can I just ask one question here? I saw that there was a place for a heliport, but I didn't see that there was an airstrip? We're talking about airplanes coming in. I didn't see one.
I, I was told, go ahead.
The, there are two proposed helipads. One is located in the central portion of the Gwinoc Valley Site associated with the Emergency Response Center. The other is located for guest use at Dieter Reservoir. And it is a floating, I guess, it's for seaplanes to land in Dieter Reservoir. So there's no actual pavement or construction associated with that.
Okay, so it'd be aquatic?
Exactly, and right next to the helipad.
Thank you.
Can, can I ask that if we have public comment open, that we focus on public comment right now and then bring it back to the board again? Or do one or the other? Chair?
Public comment is still open, so we have the next speaker.
Thank you so much. I'd just like to point out that we heard a lot-
Please tell your first and last name for the record.
Reverend Julia Bono, Rainbow Church of Living Light. I'd just like to point out that we had a lot of comments today from people with vested commercial interests, people who are builders, who are going to make money from this. Okay, they're not really thinking about the people who are going to be suffering when they're trying to evacuate by fire. Okay, it's great to have money in your back pocket, but if it goes up in smoke, what's the use of it? Listen, we're going to have an extra, this Middletown resident community with the, with the requested zoning change is going to put, you know, a huge burden on a very small community. You know, we've been there for 151 years. This is a small town. You're going to increase its size in terms of population by at least 300, possibly 700, maybe 900, a town that only has about 1,000 people right now or just over. You know, this is an incredible increase in, in, in population for our town. We're basically being sold out to a foreign developer. And Middletown has a real problem with this. And I really want to speak from the point of view of the residents of Middletown, the people that actually live in Middletown. Most of, spoke to people who spoke today do not live in Middletown. So really, do not do this to us. We cannot take this additional burden on our infrastructure, on our social services, on our schools. This is not okay. Again, please consider that a lot of people who spoke today have vested commercial interests. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Lisa Kaplan, and I'm so glad that I have another opportunity to talk about something that I forgot, which is that the development in Middletown is on a floodplain. And I, if, I wrote you guys a letter and it's in the letter, there's some kind of codes that it's supposed to abide by and that the EIR is supposed to investigate, chapter 25 of the Lake County Code. Like, has that actually been investigated? Chapter 25 and Article 35, if there really is a flood risk and you can't say 1% because with climate change, we have absolutely no idea what our percentages are anymore. Okay? And this 100-year flood thing, it's not true anymore. Everything has changed. That's one thing. I also wanted to respond to the, I'm an educator and I, I, I worked with the schools and I worked at the charter school and I, in Middletown. And, you know, we don't know who all these workers are who are going to come in and I have nothing against anybody except can we support them in terms of what their bilingual needs might be? Because we are barely supporting our Spanish-speaking populations. And also, when we say that there's not going to be an expansion of kids at the Gwinoc thing, that's fine. But I'm talking about Middletown. And all of these workers coming in, many of them will have families. And those kids will be all different ages and it is going to impact our schools. And that's something to consider, like really consider. But more than anything, I'm concerned about the people who have been living in Middletown for a long time in single-family homes, being impacted by these dual family homes and this very congested development that is going to happen there. And again, that's going to impact our, our escape routes also. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to take a look in the Zoom room real quick. All right, I'm going to let the one guest on Zoom. Please be sure to say your first and last name and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't take three minutes. Angela Amor. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more and piggyback off of the question regarding the schools. And Commissioner Fields brought up a good point. She had asked the project plan if the impact, what the impact would be on the schools. And they said that the residents, they would mostly be second and third homes. But as the previous speaker, the public comment, has there been an assessment of the impact of the workers on the public school system, their children? Has that been assessed? I know they state that these are going to be second and third homes, but the workers will be living in Lake County full time. So has that been, and looked at thoroughly? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Coming back to the chambers. Stay your first and last name and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Margot Cambara, Lake Cap. I forgot to mention that Lake Cap submitted three letters this morning on this topic and I'm pulling highlights from those letters. Following up on what we were talking about, and that is the P R E I R, General Plan Amendment and the rezone to commercial resort. We respectfully request that any approval of the P R E I R for phase four, covering approximately 3,000 of the 16,000 acres designed for future development be conditioned upon a formal review of the remaining 13,000 acres as part of the Lake County General Plan 2050 update. At a special meeting hosted by Middletown Area Town Hall on July 21st, on this subject, residents called for a dialogue and review of zoning and other concerns to continue while Lake County 2050, the county's general plan and Middletown area plan update is underway. Lake Cap concurs. The proposed project changes can fundamentally alter the character and appearance of Lake County, appearance of Lake County valued overwhelmingly by the Lake County 2050 survey respondents and residents. Although the project includes a proposed exchange to increase agricultural land, concerns remain about the commitment to smart development within the newly established Gwinoc Valley District. Lands previously zoned for agriculture are used, for agricultural use are proposed to be part of the 16,000 acres designated commercial resort, eliminating agricultural land use constraints and raising the risk of unchecked sprawl and high-density development. The land use changes establishing the Gwinoc Valley District occurred during the COVID-19 pandemic, a time that significantly limited the public's ability to participate in planned meetings. Given this context, we urge the Planning Commission to support a comprehensive review of the 13,000 acres not included in phase one to ensure a balanced, forward-looking approach to development. We appreciate your attention to this matter and welcome the opportunity to provide additional input. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, Charles Morris. I spoke earlier. I just want to go over a, a little piece that has brought, has been brought up. If we're going to evacuate people by aircraft, we're going to use Dietrich Reservoir. Dietrich Reservoir is, you know, all these fires, I mean, I've been there for every single one of them, all these fires, you're going to need to be able to land an airplane on an empty reservoir. They all happened during the droughts. That area had happened even more than anything. You could pretty much say from like 2009 to 2019, that area off and on was burning all the time. I really feel for the residents when it gets to be a bad situation and there is no water, there's no, there is a drought. The other side of it, too, is if you can't land an airplane, you can't evacuate people. I personally, I live on the southern half near the Napa County line. I had to evacuate because of the fire. It took me five hours to drive literally 100 feet during the fires. There's just no way out. Okay? I feel for these folks that we're going to put in there, we're going to collect all this money. We have to be responsible, we have to think about it. But on the other hand, my point is clear. The money's coming in, it has to be vetted. Are you going to go to the GAO, Department of Agriculture and everybody else and say, hey, where does this money come from? Is it our adversaries? Because water can be used against us. My, my key point is water security. Pewter Creek starts in Lake County and it ends in Salado County at Travis Air Force Base. Okay? We cannot say, yay, we're going to, we're going to cover ourselves in jelly beans and hummingbirds if we aren't taking care of our brothers and sisters, if we're not taking care of the kids on this board out here. Okay? This is the reality that we have to live in and this is what our forefathers gave us. And this is why we built Lake Berriessa. These folks can do anything they want when we're not looking and there's nobody there to do it. I would love to be able to drive down that private road and see if they're using their water rights the right way or the wrong way. But no, they're going to have a fence there. And if, if there's a fire, only the people who live there can go there. That is just completely wrong, folks. We have to take care of all of us. All right? The world is too damn small for us to hide up on this hill and act like everybody else don't exist. God bless you, that's all I got.
Thank you for your comment.
Carlos Bono, Rainbow Church of Living Light. I just want to draw attention to the fact that the Middletown residents have already been impacted considerably since our sewer rates were doubled due to the project. Project, our sewer rates increased 100% and we later learned that it was because it was for accommodating your project. At any rate, I just wanted to include that because I, I, I don't think it was, it was touched upon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Chair Chavez?
Yes.
If I may, I have a little more information regarding the housing, post-housing site on Santa Clara.
Okay. And also, we do have 10 minutes till that lunch deadline. Are we still giving staff the one hour lunch after 12? Okay.
Thank you.
Just as an announcement, we will be pausing the meeting at 12 so that staff can take their break.
This parcel on Santa Clara Road is approximately 12.6 acres. It is within the general plan land use designation of low-density residential and is zoned single-family residential. It is within the community growth boundaries, meaning that it has access to municipal water and sewer, and is within the area that during the local area plan process was deemed by the Middletown residents as a good spot for further development and possibly higher-density housing. That's the reason for a community growth boundary. During the lay pack meetings, which are the Local Area Plan Advisory Committee meetings for the 2050 Lake County General Plan Update, there were no recommendations to downgrade or downzone this area, nor were there any discussions or requests to take it out of the community growth boundary. So it will remain in the community growth boundary for the general plan update. There was a subdivision map, SD 05 dash 0 something or other, that was approved in 2006 by the Planning Commission that would have allowed a 50-lot subdivision, 49 residential lots and one common use lot, similar to what is proposed today. That was approved, but it expired due to, you know, we had a financial hardship and the map was not able to be taken to its full final recordation prior to its expiration. So that did expire. But you would have seen on that map, just as you will see on this tentative subdivision map, the base flood elevations that do deal with the floodplain. FEMA has recently updated those maps and this tentative subdivision map will reflect the base flood elevations that are appropriate for those flood elevations. Furthermore, as I've previously mentioned to the Planning Commission, there is a special meeting before the Board of Supervisors scheduled on July 29th to discuss the Housing Action and Implementation Plan that has been in the works this, this time as well. In the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, it does anticipate an increase in population for Lake County of approximately 3,300 people over the next 20-year period. That is roughly an increase of 1,400 households. In order to accommodate an increase of this anticipated population, as well as taking into account the reduced vacancy rate that is typical for Lake County, which is about 25.6%, they do, it is proposed that in order to accommodate growth, as well as get us back to our normal second house vacancy rate, they do anticipate a need for 5,060 new housing units within the next 20 years. As we recognize already in Lake County, this need for housing was exacerbated during the 2015 Valley Fire, has only gotten worse with subsequent fires. And so there is a need for a restoration of housing at all economic levels, not just market rate, not just low income, workforce housing is in there, so all economic levels. And this project, the Santa Clara Housing, is consistent with the zoning district, the land use designation for the general plan, and it complies and helps us meet the, the need for housing going forward. Thank you.
I have a question on your comments there. You said that was possibly for higher density. Where, where does it state that or what's that based on?
Yeah, thank you. The community growth boundaries, as was discussed with every single lay pack for this latest update, when, when the lay packs are considering, do we need to expand our community growth boundaries? They're doing so in anticipation or thinking about where we might want our, our higher-density housing to be added into the community or additional commercial. That is the purpose for a community growth boundary. It's not listed in our- It's not listed in our zoning ordinance, but it is how we approach our general plan updates. A number of our community growth boundaries did not have any recommendation for expansion because the lay packs decided that infill is still available. And so there wasn't really a need to expand that community growth boundary. One of the reasons a community growth boundary would be expanded is it gives a message to our municipal water and sewer providers to say, this is where we anticipate growth going in the future. That's why we would extend a community growth boundary. And so the community felt that, no, the needs for housing and increased impact for commercial are already being met with the current community growth boundary. Yeah.
So just to clarify, for this, it's already low-density, so it would have to be rezoning?
No. Currently, at single-family residential with access to municipal water and sewer, it has a 6,000-square-foot minimum parcel size, just as R1, without even a rezone to R2. So hypothetically, it actually could be divided into 91 single-family residential parcels. But that's not what's being asked here today. What is being asked here today? The R2 is requested so that it will ministerially accommodate the duplexes. It's not asking for an increased density due to R2. It's actually just in the area that would have the duplexes. But it is less than what it could get at just keeping it R1, which would be 91 different, or 6,000-square-foot parcels.
We do have three minutes left. If there is one speaker that wishes to use our last remaining minutes before we go on break.
Jim Comstock, again, talking about housing in the Middletown area. An enormous amount of housing was lost during the Valley Fire. One of them, more dense ones, actually the densest was the apartment complex on Highway 175 that did burn and has not been rebuilt. So these apartments or these workforce housing would enhance some of that rebuilding of available housing. And those were very dense, the apartments were very dense. The picture I saw are much more aesthetically pleasing and accommodating for families. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
So just looking for clarification on the housing. Currently, we're just approving, moving forward with this, we'd be approving the rezone. But there was something stated that the actual specific plan of development for that housing project is yet to be before this body?
What is before the body today is also a use permit for the community center in that housing area. The rezone is included. What is not included today is not the specific plan of development, but rather the tentative subdivision map. That will come before this commission at a later date.
And that would include the tentative, can you describe the tentative subdivision map?
Certainly. It has bunches of pages in it. It includes a number of notes that are requirements regarding both the base flood elevation, the required setting of monuments to make sure that, you know, you can find your parcel in the future. It has has the layout for the different parcels, their dimensions, the roads, cross-sections of other stuff that I actually usually don't pay attention to, but many pages that are all required to comply with our subdivision ordinance and the Subdivision Map Act.
And I believe that is our time. We will take a one-hour break. We will be back at 1:00 PM to continue with our meeting today, so thank you all for your time.